Ready? Very good. Welcome, everybody. Last meeting of the year. Welcome to our December 13th. I hope everybody has a blessed and merry Christmas and happy holidays, whatever you observe, and a happy New Year. So with that, I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have some guests with us this evening. Every year, our village of Rhinebeck Fire Department elects new officers, and I think it's an honor to have them here this evening to recognize their service to our community, their dedication to what they do, their passion for responding and protecting us. And so I would like to honor them by formally recognizing them this evening as part of the new election officer for the Rhinebeck Fire Department. So a new chief, please come up with Brian Matt. Assistant Chief Peter Fraley. Under fire, Todd's not here, right? Todd Leary, not present. Shane, not here. First Lieutenant Blake. EMS, I think most people know, Jeff Carter. First Lieutenant Eric DeWheeler. I don't see Tim. Then we have a civil office as well. So President, new President-elect Walter Carter. I'm not going to introduce another guy, but I will. Vice President Sonny Freeman. Financial Secretary Leanne Pitcher. Treasurer John Imbrotto. And just to round it out, Director Jim Rogers and Second Director Jamie Freeman. All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the new Fire Captains and Fire Marshals and EMS and Civil for the year of 2023 for the Village of Rhinebeck Fire Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, guys. We're looking forward to it. Okay. Next on our agenda, who has also a town board meeting in the town of Red Hook this evening, so we're putting him up front to talk about an agreement that he's worked on for probably over a year with Spectrum and the new Spectrum contract. And it's been out to the board for the review. We can summarize that if you would like, but I think, Robert, I'm going to turn the stage over to you. If you could come up to the podium, I'd like to welcome Robert McCann, Town of Red Hook Supervisor.
First of all, thank you very much for having me here. And it's too bad that the folks from the fire company have already left. I would like to congratulate them because mutual aid is so important to our community and to others, and so we appreciate their service. Boy, Gary, I wish it was only a year. It's been several years. As you all know, the last agreement in the state of town of Red Hook was back in the early 90s with then, I think, was TCI, Time Warner Cable, and now it's Spectrum. And so years ago, I was anointed, be careful what you offer, I was anointed the representative to get the negotiations started for the five municipalities of Panda, the village in town of Rhinebeck, the village in town of Red Hook, and the village of Tybalt. And it's been several years, and actually three government reps later for the cable company. And we have finally reached a point where we have an agreement. And I will tell you, we had an agreement in principle quite some time ago, but the lawyers representing both the town and the cable company, you know, went back and forth on some of the language, mostly dealing with notifications. These agreements are actually very basic at this point. Most of it is regulatory, and the PSC really determines sort of the guardrails of where they can operate and how, you know, we can obtain franchise fees and what the limitations are for that. Very important for the folks at home, if you've been watching Panda all these years, you realize that Panda is at the moment not on our local channel, and that is because the equipment that they've had, which is supported by the franchise fees that each municipality receives, is very outdated and has actually failed at this point. And so very important that we continue to move these agreements forward. In this agreement that we have, which I would suggest you use as a template for your municipality or starting point, maybe it's good enough for you. Your attorneys will, I'm sure, want to chime in. This agreement includes funding for the equipment necessary and updates the equipment and brings it to, if not state of the art, certainly very close to it. So the user experience on the local cable channel will be a lot better for folks. So with that being said, any questions from anyone?
I'd like to open up the board first. If they have questions, if they've had a chance to review the agreement, to ask their questions.
Just for clarification, this is only for, the agreement with Charter is only for the hardware. The ongoing operating budget is supplied by the five municipalities?
That's right. So I think I forwarded to you a draft that what we're going to start with perhaps for the agreement between the municipalities for funding. As you know, Panda has not had an increase in funding for six or seven years now, so that's included, sort of an updating of current costs for that. So that is separate and apart the municipalities amongst themselves, yeah. Right?
So I went down the rabbit hole on this about eight or nine years ago, and what I ran into was that the Public Service Commission said that the contract would automatically renew. So it was sort of like it didn't incentivize them to see the table. We were trying to get some more goodies for the Panda equipment. And so then, maybe a year or two later, they sent a standard, one of their standard boilerplate deals, and then I sent it to a telecom consultant, and he looked at the definition of gross revenue, and we had the best definition you could ever have here with our existing old, old, old agreement, and that he said that we would actually make less money with that 5% multiplier, given the new definition that Time Warner was proposing.
You're saying that's a new definition of this agreement?
A gross, I don't know about yours.
Yeah, okay. Again, I think a lot of this is controlled by PSC and what they're allowed to include in the definition.
But you can, I think a lot of it was the QPC revenues and the home shopping stuff. Like, our definition of gross revenue had that in there, and then they tried to kind of remove that in their, in the draft that they sent. So if we would look at this, I would really like to send the draft to this upstate consultant just for a quick look after he gives me a quote. I don't think he would charge very much money at all to look at this, look this over, but...
Yeah, I think you'd want to put this out to whoever can give you some meaningful advice on this. You know, that said, you don't want it to take a few years like it did with our municipality, and there are obviously some costs associated with legal and other reviews, so you have to weigh that, that cost benefit analysis, and again, the PSC.
And that $50,000 for the goodies, that's just your proportion to share, just for your community? That's for the whole?
No, that would, that's for Panda. So that would be the entire capital contribution, which I know is not impressive, but it does move a lot of...
It does a lot, yeah.
Where did those numbers come from, Robert? Was that from Panda?
It came from Panda.
Okay.
And that, and those specific pieces of equipment that are identified in the contract from Panda, so...
And the $54,000 provided by Spectrum.
Spectrum.
And that's not a municipal fund?
It's not a municipal fund. You will see, however, in the draft agreement between the municipalities, what I would ask you to take a look at in the near future, so we can move on that and we can get Panda up and running on the cable channel, that there is a small amount reserved for future capital purchases, and this is just a 10-year agreement of that.
So us, till we approve it or till all of the five municipalities approve it, that $54,000 for Panda is in limbo. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're, I think if there's an important aspect to this, that we work hard to get Panda back up and operational as quick as possible. Because we have the approved, as a village, we're on a different cycle than towns, we have funding in our budget for this year that takes us until May for Panda, and then we go through our budget process to put that, put that forward. But I would like to make sure that we move expeditiously after taking this long to get Panda up and running.
Yeah, because once you come to terms with Spectrum, they'll need to actually send the agreement to the Public Service Commission, and they ultimately will sign off on it. And that tends to be about a 60-day window on top of it. So, you know, for the folks at Panda that are still sort of waiting to get, you know, basics, you know, it's important that we move as expeditiously as we can, yeah.
So being it just be a draft document, we're not accepting this document, but I would like to make a motion that we go forward with the board, for any of you who want to take it out to an external source, but I'd also like to make a motion to take it to our legal counsel to start the review process as well.
Can you give me a budget? Say $700. If it's under $700, I have the authority to let him get started, or...
Want to make a motion to do that?
Could I tag that onto your motion?
Sure.
Yeah. Second for both.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's move with expeditiously.
Robert wanted to do a question.
Any questions?
One question. Why 10, not 5?
You know, the previous agreements had successive periods of five-year terms, which is how we got to this point. That was in the compromising with the cable company that really said that we're not signing five-year agreements, we're signing 10-year agreements. You know, one of the, one of the problems we face is there really isn't any competition here, at least for the cable aspect. You know, the internet aspect, you know, we're starting to hear other companies who are interested, but of course, you don't get franchise fees for internet service that's provided by somebody else. That's different regulation.
Who have you heard is interested in Red Hook? I'm curious.
So for providing internet service? I think they've been down your way, haven't they?
Archtop? Yeah.
Yeah.
Who is it?
It's called Archtop Fiber.
Or Fiber?
Yeah, and so they're going day of met with the town of Red Hook, and they came here. My response to them was, I believe that similar to this, we as municipalities should get together before we go individually, one-on-one with them to have that, have those conversations.
Well, thanks very much for having me.
Well, is there any questions in the audience about Spectrum? Eric?
Yeah, Eric Steinman from the Hudson Valley Pilot. I just want to get some clarity on the $54,000. My understanding is that this server failed with Panda. Is this going to cover the cost of a new server as well as new software?
That's included, yeah, that's included in the $54,000, yeah.
Does it also include the, for lack of a better term, the sort of Panda 2.0?
It does.
Okay, so that's, that's the sort of, that's the production of the app as well? Okay, to reach a larger audience, so it won't be limited to Channel 23?
It will not be limited, from my understanding, to Channel 23. There's different features that are looking at closed captioning as included in the budget that's being proposed, which I think we would be interested in.
And it's still going to be a 501(c)(3), correct? Panda will be operating it?
I don't see any reason why it wouldn't, but I can't really speak for Panda.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Good luck at your board meeting.
See you.
Okay, as we like to put presentations up front, the next presentation is from David Asher on, talked about senior housing. Just remind everybody, we, last conference, we had Kristin Heinsen to talk about affordable housing. We also want to talk about senior housing.
Thank you. Give me a second to boot up my computer again.
And David, just to introduce yourself, David.
So I'm David Ashen, and I live on, some of you know me, I live on, can you hear me? Sorry.
Is that a mic on, David?
Yes.
There's a little switch on. Yes, there you go.
I live at 54 South Street in the village of Rhinebeck and have been here for almost 10 years, very happily. I have a company called Dash Design, and we design a variety of things. I don't specialize in one thing, but I do a lot of hotels and restaurants. In the last couple of years, I've been interested in senior housing, and I formed a nonprofit two years ago, which is a thing called the H Just Living Collaborative, which selfishly was a way for me to learn more about senior living, because I am no way an expert about it. But I have a, I have a board of people who are experts, who are thinkers, who write policy, who design, and work in all different aspects of senior living. So I will jump in. How many of you, I mean, it's a broad question, but what is your knowledge of what you think of senior communities? It was about where I was. Do you know the average age in which people move in? So there's what are called age-restricted communities, which people think of senior living, which are 55 and over communities, which really aren't senior living, senior communities. They provide places for people who are near retirement, on 55, but they don't provide services. So when we think of senior living, we think of more traditional models, and I'll show you an example of a traditional model. This is one, which I just finished, which is a tower, but these communities tend to have three levels of tiers of living. There is independent, is a non-licensed type of housing community. Non-license is important to understand. So they, they provide communal services like meals, communal spaces, a place where people can socialize, and residents can have their own caretakers, but the staff cannot provide care without being licensed. You'll see places like Holiday Kipsey is an independent living community. I've worked with Holiday, that's more of middle class, and you get to places like this, which is more upper-middle class to upper-class, which provide a lot of facilities. And you'll see in the last 20 years, really an evolution in what people, what we're designing now. So they look like resorts, super communal, this is a, this is an assisted living dining room, this is independent living. When you get up to assisted living, you require licenses, but you also have higher level of service. There's a lot of stigma attached, the average age of people moving into independent living? Do you guys know what the average, any of a guess on the average age of people moving in independent living?
78.
About 82. So people tend not to move unless they have to, so one of the things we're trying to do is change that paradigm. And there's also, some of the things we focus on is aging in place and providing resources and technology and information for how people can also age at home, which most people, a lot of people prefer to do. Isolation is a big issue with seniors, so communities provide a place where people can thrive and socialize, which is very important for all human beings. This is an example of a newer community. What's, I thought would be really interesting to share with some other typologies, which are residential typologies. And in, you know, a village like Rhinebeck, there are some opportunities to do this in what's called, this is called a small house model. And it's a very interesting model. It's a footprint. In this one, we have about one, two, three, four, five, there are eight residents, guest rooms, basically apartments, there are bedrooms with full bathrooms, communal living spaces, but this would be a assisted living model. And what it does, it's a 3,500, depending on the size of the unit, to 8,000 square feet, depending on if it's eight to 14 rooms, but provides full level of service and care, but in a residential model. So this could be plopped down on a residential building site, a house could be converted. What is nice is it is a very communal model, so they will have someone who cooks dinner for the residents, provides their medication, provides assistance, but it fits very nicely into a community like ours or other communities. And it's a model that can be, people, well, how do we afford to do it? It's a model that can be financially viable. And there are different grants that states give out, especially whenever it involves affordable housing models integrated into senior housing. So what's really nice about this model is that, as it says here, smaller environments, consistent staff, a family, so it's not the caretaker and the residents, but people are more familiar in there. These tend to be a little more curated when you think about the residents. If you have eight people living together, you want to make sure you have the right mix of eight people living together. And it also allows for integration into community and more socialization. This is a model called a household typology, which really takes the small house model, and it's kind of a conglomerate of a series of smaller models connected through a shared, basically back-up house and shared services and teams. So this one is a model of, this is, I should note, 2, 6, 10, 12, this is about 14 around common areas, you have a dining room, a kitchen again, and communal spaces, but it's also connected to another module. So again, you get more of a smaller community and more support, you have shared resources in terms of the staffing, but it's again a more residential and communal way of living. So again, these are some images from some of my colleagues of some of the places. So this is just some, this is from a presentation we did, which was kind of senior living 101, I won't read through the whole thing. Does anyone have any questions about these two models or anything, or just ask, Gary?
So yes, so we have the facility Brookmead.
Yep.
Which provides some similar aspects to this as well in Rhinebeck.
Right.
Right. Which is integrated out into their complex. So you view that as an aspect of similar to this?
Brookmead's a little larger. It's, I don't think it's a household model, it's a more traditional model, although it's not as many rooms, but they also have independent living and assisted living, I believe. They have memory care? I don't know if they have, they might have memory care too.
I don't know where to get to that third stage, but I do know that Ferncliff has just added a memory care unit.
Yeah, yeah, and Ferncliff is a little different. Ferncliff was always, is more of the, what is traditional nursing home model.
Correct.
Yeah. And the challenge always in this is how do you, which I think is a very interesting challenge, is making sure you can try, provide housing for across all economic, you know, levels. And people tend to look at the fancier communities, I think it's only for the wealthy, but there are companies like Holiday, who was owned by Atrio, which is one of the largest owners of senior living in the world now, that are looking at, and Holiday's focused on working class families, seniors, and upgrading the standard in the communal spaces, but the goal is trying to provide services and allow people to live healthier lives. And in that, I'm sorry, you were going to ask?
Oh, I didn't mind that. Are there any working models of the household?
Yes.
I'm just curious where they are.
I can get you, we have one of the people on our board who owns a bunch of small house models, and I was going to talk to, there's a very interesting organization called, which is at the end, called Live Together. Sorry, these are the same. And Live Together is founded by a woman named Jane Roody, and Jane Roody's a proponent of inter-intentional community or intergenerational housing. She's worked a lot on developing a number of small house models as well as household models and rights policy for the government, and be an interesting person to get into to talk about. She knows all the, how to dig into it. But the concept of community model is in her company, her company, her organization is called Live Together, which people can Google, because a lot of very interesting information about Live Together, but really proponent of integrating the small house model into other housing types, so you have a community, and you can pull resources and train people to help take care of some of the seniors in the community, but you also build relationships that are multi-generational. So if you think of, I don't know, you think of, you know, off the top of my head, like the worker housing that is, workforce housing that's being planned for Ferncliff, the interesting place to think about, you know, would there be a component or a small house model nearby where there, you can get resources and shared resources, but also build community between the multi-generational housing types. So intergenerational living is a very interesting paradigm, and again, you can go to the site, and I can get Jane in to talk to you guys if you're interested, but it does build really dynamic opportunities for communities. So these are some of the benefits of intergenerational living, workforce development, learning opportunities within environments, safe house, consistent housing for youth, elders, and students, so you really build... And it's more common in, if you go to European cities, especially in the Netherlands, where you see more mixed housing, both socioeconomic as well as generational. This idea of removing isolation, so not ghettoizing seniors is actually quite important and very interesting. And more seniors, as you know, are moving, I mean, people are, when I moved to Rhinebeck, a lot of people moving at the time were empty nesters who were interested in being part of a community and being able to walk to the, to the town. So there are different challenges, and there are a lot of people who have aged here, who have large houses and don't necessarily want to leave the village, and Brookmead is a really nice alternative. There's also, there's also a watermark, which is in Millbrook, which is also has independent and assisted living, it's a little spread out, that's a more traditional, but the idea of thinking about senior housing in a community like this in a small house model or a household model could be a very interesting, I think, solution for a lot of the people who are aging in Rhinebeck, because you keep them in the village or close to the village, you keep them close to where they spent 30, 40, even 10 years, and it gives them the opportunity to age comfortably in a location or even, you know, what's, what's it? This organization is also looking at its ties to the village-to-village network, which we are very lucky, because we have Rhinebeck at home, which is part of the village-to-village network, so NINA and that group do amazing work. So how you can start to think about resource sources and creating community and new housing types that might support seniors. So that's just kind of an overview without getting too heavy into it from someone who's a little bit of a novice that has been working on designing these for the last three years. I designed about five or six of them at this point in the last two years. And there are interesting programs with the state and the government to help subsidize some of these things.
About design-wise, like, I'm just curious, are there certain needs when it comes to designing interior spaces, either architecturally or with the furniture, that are there certain codes that these different types of senior housing have to meet?
Well, everything has to be ADA, number one, and you'll notice, it's like when you get to the seating, furniture has to be really well considered, so furniture heights are different, making sure, if you look at furniture, most things have arms. As you design the public spaces, making sure there's enough pathways. I was just in one property, I was finishing up in Pennsylvania, and I was astounded, you know, you look at, people are walkers, they're in... know, you look at, people are walkers or in scooters, and you can look at around, and they want to be active, they don't want to be hindered by something in the way. If you think about the small house model, you know, in an area where you want to potentially, you don't have a large building, so if you do it two stories, you need to put an ADA compatible elevator in. Colors, light, natural lights, important, a lot of times seniors don't get out as much, so bringing the light in or providing places they can go and be outdoors, a lot of people think about that. A lot of the things we think about also are, you may not think about, but, you know, art programs, you know, in terms of what is the art and accessories in there. Seniors don't see color as vividly, so when you think about color, thinking about how color might be slightly distorted, lighting, artificial lighting, super important. You know, sound transmission, because as we all get older, most of us, I mean, I know I sit in a restaurant and things are echoing, so you allow people to hear conversation across the dinner table, and that has to be very thoughtfully thought of. And then places, the thing that's really crucial is, a lot of time, as people age, their families don't want, they find it depressing to go. So it's providing places, one of the things we did here in, the tower did in Atlanta, was brown floor is an open café that's on the street, so people can come with their families, their grandkids, it's a pleasant place to hang out. So thinking about places where families can gather and be together, public spaces, but also not annoy the residents. So there's a battle, because it's also the preference. So this has public spaces downstairs, and then public, common spaces for the residents above. Patterns can be very confusing, but we do have a strong pattern on the floor, too. When you get into areas of memory care, you have to be very careful with colors you use and patterns. These people will see things that are not there, you know, a large black pattern in the carpet looks like a hole, and someone who has dementia or Alzheimer's won't walk across it. So there's lots of things, but I think what is, the challenge is always making sure that you're providing the appropriate level of care and designing a place where people are going because they want to go, rather than they feel like they have to go and it's their last step. Jane Roody told a very interesting story about one of our small house models, as she did, there was a woman who was in her late 80s, I forget what was wrong with her, but she being immobile, they moved her to, from her house because they needed higher level of care, they moved her to a small house model, and she started to engage with the rest of the community, and she started to walk again, and she was able to go home, which they thought would never happen. So socialization is super important.
Is there a minimum size that, or, sorry, is there a critical mass that's needed for one of these projects, either the household or this larger project?
Yeah, small house model tends to be minimum of eight, I think 12 is a sweeter spot for that. When you get into the larger communities, the ones I've been working on are 50 to 100 household models, depends how many modules and what the staffing is. The challenge people are having right now is in the cost of staffing. So I work with Blackstone Group, which owns a lot of, they're a huge company, and their challenge right now, they have their portfolio with not people, because we thought there was a big downturn in, people pulled their families out of, basically their parents out of communities during COVID. So I thought the issue might be in re-renting them, but the issue is the staffing model is complex. Small house model tends to be a little bit simpler, and Jane and Gary, I forget Gary's last name, who's on our board, is one of the developers of that typology, so I could always get data, a lot more data for you to understand.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the public?
I just have a question for clarification. The small house model, how does that differ from, say, a boarding care facility?
A boarding care facility?
Yeah.
I don't know what a boarding care facility is.
Oh, it's, from what you're describing, it's very similar in that it's usually anywhere from five to eight residents with a sort of rotating staff, but it's, usually they convert a house or, you know, residential property to a place that is ADA compliant, where residents of varying degrees of mobility can live.
It's probably similar.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
Gary, let me see you. I was just kind of curious how our zoning would accommodate, or might I suspect not accommodate, small house zoning, or small house model. So we go by dwellings, so if there was a dwelling, we don't restrict the household size. I think that's, there's a constitutional issue with that, too, with a Supreme Court case from Ohio. So my, that's, that's my quick answer, I'm sorry. So we don't restrict that. I had a question about the, does the, the funding mechanism, does it go with the individual in the form of a voucher, or does it go with the real estate to the developer?
The developer.
Okay.
Yeah. It goes to developer and their grants that go directly to the developer and tax incentives.
That's from the, like, the same, the similar tax incentive program that you have with that funds workforce housing?
Yeah.
It's just on a smaller level.
Smaller.
That's really neat.
And the state, New York, tends to be a little more difficult with licensing, but they tend to be very pro, if you include affordable housing and senior housing, then they'd be, they tend to be more proactive and more amenable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, cool. Thank you. Hope that was.
Very informative. Very. Thank you. All right, the next part of our agenda is a public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment? John?
Good evening, everybody. Hi, John Rossi, 53, Marlow Place. Just want to make a quick comment question about the ADA, excuse me, related resolution that's on the agenda for this evening. And just by quick background, I do a lot of volunteering for a disability advocacy group located in the Gipsy, and one of the things that we did several weeks ago was we sent out letters to any village or town in Dutchess County that we perceived had a potential noncompliance, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but just very quickly, we referenced some material from the Department of Justice, that a small town has to provide notice to the public about its ADA Americans with Disabilities Act obligations. And that requirement is usually satisfied by a simple posting on a website. So we sent a letter to anybody, any municipality in the county, that we couldn't find the letter, you know, we couldn't find the information on the website. And that included our village, that included our town, and in fact, Supervisor McKean just mentioned his awareness about it, and that they've taken care of it, and I'm happy to say that the village is also taking care of it. So wanted to be clear that no one is saying that there was a noncompliance, and if there was a noncompliance with this particular requirement, that it was, I'm sure it was really, it was certainly without any malice. But at the same time, I would just share that there are 30, roughly 30 towns, villages in Dutchess County, and we couldn't find any of them that had this information posted, not one. So we made 30 outreach, which is quite a bit, and we heard back from several, the town of Northeast, Village of Tebly, Village of Millbrook, Rodditt, and people were, and the municipalities were actually pretty glad that we reached out. And the action that's being taken by the board today is perfect, the resolution, so that's all good. The only question I have about the resolution was, there's no reference, and maybe this is already the intention, but that information does have to be posted publicly. So my question is, will that be posted on the village's website?
If at all, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your time, everybody. Have a good holiday.
Any other public comment? Harry Dunn, we're going to move on. Thank you. Treasures report, Karen.
Hey, treasures report is for the period ending November 30th. The general fund ended the month with $150,933.47. The water fund ended the month with $148,116.23. And the sewer fund ended the month with $249,974.32. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $274,403.88. In the water fund, $75,103.69. In the sewer fund, $44,734. We have a water treatment plant upgrade for $13,996.88. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, $6,305. A couple bills for the Ross grant of $5,440, and escrow of $3,205. An operating statement is provided for the revenue and expenditures through December 13th, 2022. Just a little informational on the mortgage tax. We received our mortgage tax for April to September 2022, and a total of $30,348. And for the same timeframe, last year was $47,523. So we'll need to monitor that and kind of keep that in mind when we go into our budget for next year, just to see what the trend's going to be and what we have coming up. Mid-year, December marks the mid-year for the village's fiscal year. I will be working with the department heads on their budgets and prepare a six-month report for the January meeting. MutiLink, Invoice Cloud, and Neptune 360 are water and sewer billing software. Our first complete billing will be going out in January. We are progressing January's bill, maybe a week late if we have some problems reading the meters, but we're hoping to get the meters ready in the next two weeks, but it's been a little challenging. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by Trustee Nunacur and are presented for authorization.
I'd like to get the water and wastewater adjustments approved as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and I just have just a couple budget amendments, just for the planning and zoning in contractual expense account in the amount of $625 each, and taking that from the contingency, for a total of $1,250. And that would be for the purpose to extract the property files and import them into Laserfish.
Question, how much do we have, Jim? Off your head, do you know what we have left in contingency?
$22,500 minus $1,250.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any other budget amendments?
That's it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as proposed by the treasurer.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Karen. Okay. Very good. Next, as John Rossi just put, we have the Americans with Disabilities Act notice that was brought to our attention, that we need to post and put on our website. It's not a matter of just posting this, it's a matter of going through the public review and accepting this as part of our notice under the Americans with Disabilities Act. We worked with Nikon to get the formal wording that we needed to do to post this. So what you have and posted and you have received is our version of what Nikon gave us to be able to post and accept this. That covers the employment, the effective communication, modification to policies and procedures, you know, and complaints, et cetera. And this was recommended by Nikon for us to adopt and to put and post publicly. So I'd like to make a motion to accept our version of the Village of Rhinebeck notice under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So posted. Thank you for letting us know. Rick, I'm going to turn it over to you for the filming application.
Okay. So this summer, as many people remember, on Chestnut Street, we had a bit of a situation where a very large film production came in, and what it pointed out to us is that our permitting application really wasn't up to handling a production of this style and size. So basically, I went out to other local communities, Kingston, New Palt, Sagerties, asked them for what they do, basically asked around for best of, and then took what I thought was the best of of those applications, and then talked to my wife, who's a filmmaker, and to Jonathan Burkhardt, who also lives here in the village and is a filmmaker. So we went back and forth and kind of pared it down and edited it. This is basically designed to do a couple of things. If there is a production onsite, there has to be a contact person onsite. There's either a, either a primary or a designated person who has to be onsite whenever the production is in, is ongoing. If it's basically a simple student film, we do not charge a permit fee, but if it runs into multiple days, and depending upon the size of production, we are charging a permit fee. We're asking for detail, much more details about where people are going to park, and what kind of, what kind of special effects are going to be used, basically trying to cover all of our bases. And this requires to be filled, this is required to be filled out prior to the production, it's then going to go to the mayor, our sergeant, the officer in charge, the fire chief, and head of public works, so that they can all take a look and see that what's happening in the time space and in the frame is adequate. This also does provide for notification of people in the area, so both by letter and by postings, actual physical postings in the area. So again, this is a best of that I saw from other, other communities and embedded by my wife and John Burkhardt. So I'd like to present this to, I'd like to present this permit application for the Village of Rhinebeck for filming, which will include photography permits.
Motion.
Please, a motion. I'll move it to, I will move that the village adopt this permitting process.
I second it.
That was good, very thorough.
Thank you.
And I liked the, the lighting after 10:00 PM piece, it was good. One question, what do, how do productions typically handle garbage and recycling when they're on set?
We ask them to police themselves, but in terms of their internal garbage recycling, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what they do for their own selves. Generally, the bigger productions have craft services, and they would handle that inside, but I don't know what they're generating, and there is nothing in this about that. And generally, I will tell you, what we are attempting to do is understand the size and the scope of the production, making sure that there's somebody responsible around to take care of it, but we're not particularly getting involved in their operations. Only, what we're really concerned about is impacts to the community, that everything is understood and that they're not adversely impacting the community. Or if they say, hey, we're going to have to shoot in the middle of the night, then we're able to go out and speak to residents and find out if it's acceptable or not. So we want to work with production companies, but at the same time, you know, we need to make sure that villagers can get a good night's sleep, so, and park. So that's what we're looking to do.
So my other question is, lots of times we'll get requests, film production crews will come from the county. The county will be bringing them in, and they'll be going around the county doing different things, and they'll come.
The county.
County tourism, Dutchess County tourism will bring film production crews in. That's part of what they do, right? So these are sponsored by the county, and lots of times, the county likes to negotiate a different rate because of what they're trying to do for promotion. I don't see any way within this to be able to negotiate something if we're coming from, for instance, a sponsored county film production to be able to do that. And we get this question often when they come over, and we'll say, no, there's a fee for this, and they'll go, oh, you know. So I would like to add a piece that if there's an external, you know, provider or whatever, that we can negotiate the fee based on that.
Okay, I can, I can certainly work that into, work that into, I assume that we have the mayor's discretion to do it.
However you want to do it.
Do you want to?
Lots of times, the county gets a lot of benefits from doing this, and we want to also.
It's not, I mean, I think the answer is, oh, not the answer, but this would be a non-commercial, not-for-profit use.
Oh, maybe, no, maybe a film production, it may be the one we had, well, Vermont and Christmas in Vermont or whatever.
If it's a film production, then they need to go, they need to go through this.
But the, but the county brings them in, and the county. But the, but the county brings them in, and the county gets a lot of promotional activity from that, and so they're actively involved in working with them around the county.
Okay, what I would say is, I think we put together a very fair schedule that has caps. There are real costs to the community, and I think we should be cognizant of that, and you know, maybe if there's a little negotiation, but I would hate to give away the store.
I agree, but I would like to cover a real cost, absolutely. We don't give away the store. We always cover a real cost, whether it's police or whatever. But if, say for instance, it's one of the larger ones, and you know, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a day, and maximum thirty-five hundred, let me hear me out before you say no, the county will often come and say, we even, you know, we would like to help promote this within the region to help tourism and improve the relationships that they have to bring more production companies into the county.
Three hundred and fifty dollars for a production of that size is chump change.
I'm just telling you, we're gonna get the requests from, we're gonna get the requests.
They can want it. I mean, I would say maybe we can have, we can have this discussion later. If you wanna bring it forward, we can put that there. But the, we are asking basically nominal amounts compared to what their expenses are.
All I would like to line is, if need be, we can negotiate a fee. That's all I ask.
Fair enough, we can put that in there.
Okay.
But I think our, our fees are very friendly, capped, and I think are very reasonable.
And I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
True.
Oh, please, I had a couple comments. Where did you get the insurance language from? Did you get it from a different?
Again, no, that's from ours. That's our, that's our permit.
Okay, 'cause the Events Code says a million, and then this is two. I don't know if two is difficult to get, two million coverage for aggregate limits for bodily? They probably don't get it, and we just accept what they, certificate they give us. I don't know.
I'd have to look at each individual certificate that they give us, but can't say it right now.
Right.
I don't know if it's difficult to obtain that or not.
To obtain it?
No, to get it, for someone to get insurance at that level.
If you were, if you were a big production company?
What if you're a little production?
What if you're a little?
Well, then, then, then we, maybe that's a case where we'd also look to negotiate. I mean, there is, there is a provision in there, or at least we're trying to separate these major productions from small. We have, we've had people come in, they shoot for an afternoon, right? We're not, we're not trying to really hinder that kind of stuff. This is really aimed for these big productions that have come in, and these are massive.
But so maybe we should refine the wording here then, because this is for everyone.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if we're already doing it, it's not consistent with the Events Code language, but probably doesn't matter if we are, if we're already doing it, it's okay.
What's, I wanna look at the, I will, I will make, I will harmonize it.
With the Events Code language?
Yeah, and what our current permit application is. Almost completely positive, we're looking at this from our current application.
But it should be consistent with the Events Code, 'cause it's under the umbrella of the Events Code.
Okay.
You'll give my vote if you.
I certainly will, but certainly we'll look at that over. Certainly look it over. Okay.
Do you wanna table this until we bring it back to next month's meeting and with the modifications?
I'll do it either way. I mean, if I can table it or do it.
Well, I don't know if Brad wants to see the amounts first before we get, before we vote, and I think we should, and I think we should.
I don't care. I mean, if we just push this one along, then we're done with it, depending on what Rick does.
All right, we have a motion, we have a first, we have a second. All in favor of approving the film application requirement with the amendments that we talked about in terms of negotiation, if need be for production and the insurance adjustments, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Brad, anything on the water plant?
They're, they're working on drawings for the engineering changes, and they're gonna, would like to present something next month, 'cause they're gonna have quite a lot to talk about.
So that'll be a presentation for this meeting?
Yeah.
All right. We moved on to Center Street, you all have the notice in terms of last month, we talked about trying to move forward with our Center Street project, and we, and we focused on what was called Option Three, which was Center Street water made in drainage improvements, no drainage, no curb, no water, made north of East Marcus Street mill and overlay all of Center Street, for a total of six hundred and seventy thousand. Okay, so that's the one that we picked to move forward on. One of the action items that we took away was for Karen Knight to look at how we can fund this program, and you all have in front of you funding recommendation to include, from the water fund, two hundred and twenty thousand, from the ARPA funds, which is our balance, two hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-three, and from our CHIPS, which is our current balance of two hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, for a total of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which meets the quote for this. And so this is submitted with the caveat that understanding the water to harbor also has a commitment to the upcoming water project, and this will use up the balance of the ARPA funds, and we rely on a small portion of the CHIPS for the twenty-three, twenty-four allotment, which would be in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So I'm really gonna open this up to discussion first before we move on, in case anybody, 'cause this is an important subject.
So we're gonna borrowing in advance against CHIPS for the paving?
No, we're not borrowing, we have the CHIPS money.
I thought you said, but for twenty-three, twenty-four?
So we probably won't get to it, so we will probably get those funds in the beginning of April, so I don't anticipate that we would be, we would be applying for reimbursement from CHIPS prior to that. So we have like two, we have a balance of two hundred and seventeen thousand. The regular CHIPS allotment next year will be about seventy-five thousand. I have about fourteen thousand currently that I need to request reimbursement for, so I, I, I was just letting you know that there is, there is enough funds, sorry.
So in other words, this is a spring project.
So we talked about getting quite a lot of ARPA for the, for the water line, and it looks like I've lost a lot, or the water department has lost a lot of that.
Well, we're using all of our ARPA funds for this project.
Correct. Right, but then we're still, we're still getting two-twenty from the water fund, when it looks like the water piece of it is.
Two hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so I'm not getting any ARPA money really at all.
I don't think that's how you wanna interpret it. It's going towards a project.
That's how I'm interpreting it.
Yeah, the project is kind of a whole package at this point.
Well, we talked about how quite a bit of that was gonna be from the, well, without, we're, I don't, from our.
This is our recommendation of where we can get the money to complete this project.
What was our total ARPA?
I give what we're here for.
It was like two sixty-one, I mean, we spent thirty thousand of it, so we have this two thirty-two left.
I mean, we're gonna be looking at two million dollars more from the water plant upgrades. I've got the two hundred, quarter of a million to remove the sediment at some point in the geotextile bags.
I'm open to suggestions if you think we can find the money from somewhere else. We took their request and said, how can we find the money if we wanna move forward? 'Cause our goal was to start permitting in a month of December to give the engineers time, so we can get ready for the spring.
But like, nothing's really coming from the general fund then, it's 'cause you got two seventeen coming from CHIPS, two thirty-two come from ARPA, and the general fund's like skating.
Do you wanna comment on that, Karen? I mean, in terms of where we could find anything from the general fund, which is a very tight budget right now?
I mean.
I mean, we talked about project as a whole. Regarding the water fund, I can say in this current year's budget, the EFC paid an interest payment of ninety-eight thousand, so it was possible that we can, we didn't have to spend that this year, we can pull that ninety-eight thousand, which would reduce this two-twenty down in the water fund. I mean, the board wants to borrow money. I mean, this, this was just a recommendation to not have to go out and borrow money, because I know we're all gonna get together, budget time, 'cause everyone has different projects that they're planning on, different grants, different village commitments to those different grants, so I, I think we're just kind of coming up with a way to.
Didn't we pledge to put down three hundred thousand on the, so there's not gonna be much of a fund balance left if we?
I thought it was two hundred, but not even three hundred.
Three, I think.
Was it three for the water, or did we commit a three for the wastewater? I'll have to look and see.
I think it's the three for the water.
Oh.
I mean, it needs to be done, I do it.
And remember, this is also assuming that there's general conditions of, you know, in terms of, we're trying to be very conservative in assessment of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but, you know, we don't know.
There's a contingency.
We do have a contingency.
Yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is, it's kicking the two hundred thousand to whatever we bond, whatever we get for our, our bond for the, for the water projects. The two hundred thousand that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That would get kicked into being, would you roll that, just get rolled into the amount of money that you're bonding for at some point?
On our application with EFC, we, we said, you know, we're gonna do a down payment of three hundred thousand.
Right, that we're gonna.
It makes it more attractive.
Correct.
So this thought we, I mean, that makes your, your grant request more attractive when you put some money down.
Right, which we have.
But I think what, Rick, if I understand, you're saying to take this two hundred and twenty and roll it into the big long-term debt, when we do go to long-term debt on the big project.
That's, that's what's gonna happen.
And that's, that's an option. That's an option. I mean, if all this starts happening at the same time.
Can you bond, can you do that with one project versus the other project based on their terms?
I'd have to see the terms of the, I'd have to see the truth.
You gotta talk about the lifespan of the project in terms of when we.
Right, well, you would have the lifespan.
It's a wash either way, I mean, whether we do it, I think that's what Rick is saying.
Together, separate, yeah.
Right, in a way, yeah.
I mean, we can look at, we can look at doing that, but just to get Macfor to public knows, the bid is four hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty, and with the contingency, it goes to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's why there's such a high amount here.
And you definitely need the contingency, 'cause there's gonna be some unknowns when you get, I do know that, so.
And we don't even know if we can get the bite yet, or a bidder. Right. So what would you like to do? Kick the can down the road or try to move forward?
I mean, if you agree in concept, in concept of this, and Brad, you wanna sit down and we can kind of go over the water part of it, I can show you, I know we have one more principal payment next year that EFC will be making as well, and then we're on our own after that, that maybe we can go through, you know, we can create this long-term debt schedule and look at.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta do this, I mean, we have to do this.
And if we, you know, if we, you know, we have, we have an okay fund balance in the water fund, and if it goes down as a result of this, we just have to start building it back up again. I mean, you know, I mean, that's what it's there for.
Yeah, we, our rate is really favorable. I know some communities are like eleven dollars per thousand, and we're seven.
And our capital, sort of our, our deferred capital maintenance is coming home to risk.
But we have three million dollars in grants.
Right.
All right. All right. It sounds like I'd like to make a motion that we accept the funding recommendation from our treasurer for water fund, two hundred and twenty thousand, ARPA funds, two hundred and thirty-two, seven hundred and seventy-three, and CHIPS, two hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, and authorized time bond to move forward with getting a permit.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, let's move it. Good job. All right, there is no update on, that I've received on any of our sidewalk grants right now, so we'll hold on that. Next one is Sixth Mulberry Street, just a note from David Gordon, our land use attorney that, I'll just read in brief, according to the eleven seventeen email, the notice of intent to be lead was sent out on eleven sixteen, which we agreed we need to wait thirty days to hear from them. So basically, we're on hold until twelve nineteen to hear terms of responses. So far, I've seen a response from our planning board that would like the village of board to be the lead agency, they have not accepted it, and there has been a return from Dutchess County, and their environmental review, we're in favor of it and moving the project, but they have some questions in regard to the septic proposal that they said they would flush out during the process, so. Other than that, I've seen no other responses back yet, but we're on hold until twelve nineteen. So that means in January, we'll be bringing this up, okay? Any questions? All right. Lydia, unfortunately, was not able to make it tonight, so the historic district discussion will be moved until next month.
She has a draft that I was working on with her.
Do you wanna summarize, or do you wanna wait for it?
No, we were just going over comments. It's, it's a version that's not gonna rewrite the whole thing, it's just some basic changes, and I understand the planning board is interested perhaps in getting a pattern book, which to help them, these decisions, which shows the features and the, of the inventory in the village and stuff, to help them make these decisions about preservation.
Okay, we're gonna move on to pending projects. Rick, Astor Bridge.
Okay, I was hoping to have some graphic elements here, but it seems like we're not connecting, so I'm gonna have to do this just verbally.
You can't connect now?
It, it, it wasn't happening, I was gonna fool around. The New York State Department of Transportation informed us that they're gonna be replacing the bridge over the landsman at Route Nine, and basically, if you're heading southbound out of the village, you come down past Legion Park, there's a little bridge there, that's the bridge that's gonna be replaced. That bridge is actually made up of two elements, one is the vehicular bridge, and the other is a separate pedestrian bridge with some green railings on it. The, the history of that area, and I looked at this with Mike Frazier, is that those green railings are probably original to the late nineteenth century sometime. There's been a series of pedestrian bridges in that spot. We have some, some old photographs that show what pretty much looks like for, by the eyeball test, those railings. At the same spot, John Jacob Astor had also dedicated a bridge, and it had, it was made from concrete, and it had a balustraded design over the water course, so there was, if you want, like vases were holding up, holding up the barrier. The state came to us, and, and they also called in the state historic preservation office. The current bridge that's there is not, the vehicular bridge is not historic structure, that is not the bridge that John Jacob Astor dedicated, that's gone. However, the pedestrian bridge with its green railings, or at least the green railings with the pedestrian bridge, are a contributing factor to the local historic district. So with all of that in mind, the state came to us and with the historical, they said, well, here's our ideas for the bridge, and they wanted to have the bridge and basically get rid of the pedestrian bridge, and my response was, no way, let's see what we can do. So I sat down with Mike Frazier, Kyle Amy, and eventually pulled in time bond to both make sure we had additional information about the history of the bridge, and to look at some possible designs for the pedestrian and the vehicular bridge that would go over, that would go over the water course there. I have a letter that I'm asking the board to approve, which is gonna go to all of the participants, basically that is New York State Department of Transportation, New York State Historic Preservation Office, and the federal government is also involved in this. And basically, the request is that we have a concrete bridge that is reminiscent of the Astor design, using a modern balustraded design. Unfortunately, the balustraded designs that are currently out there do not meet the traffic safety requirements, so we had to shift to something else, David. Excuse me, Mike Frazier and I had a, a good conversation about it. So this letter basically says, the Village of Reinbeck. So this letter basically says, the Village of Reinbeck would like to see a bridge that is at least resonant with the John Jacob Astor design, and we want to see a separate pedestrian walkway that continues to include those iron green railings. And so that's where we're going to go and ask the state for. So with the permission, I'd like, I'd like, I asked, we have Mike Fraser signing on to the letter, and I asked that the board and the mayor sign on to the letter as well. You guys have a copy of the letter.
I looked up the Texas C-412 area?
Yeah.
That's really nice. And is that a dual, do you think they're going to...
They use, it turns out Texas C-41 is actually used, yes, Newark has experience with it.
Okay.
And that's, it turns out that...
It's possible.
The Texas designs are well-known and used, and I would say, if anybody wants to see something similar, the bridge at 9G over Route 308 is also a balustraded bridge and has an open design, so it'd be something like that, that's what we're shooting for. The other nifty thing about the Astor Bridge, as it said in a New York Times article, it was illuminated by electricity. There are actually four-corner lamp posts upon it, and we did ask to have those reinstated, and part of the issue here is, besides maintaining the pedestrian walkway, which is very important and used by lots of people, and a separate pedestrian walkway, so it's a comfortable place to walk, we can help create a bit of a gateway marker for the south side of the village, because we do have a problem where people come speeding down, you know, through that little valley there and then up into the village, and if we have a more architecturally interesting structure that people will really see, they will get the message, you are arriving in Reinbeck Village, and you need to slow down. So that's part of what we would like to see done with this, with this project. These are all asks from, that we're asking the Department of Transportation. We do have a little leverage, because the pedestrian bridge is a contributing historic structure, it is not historic itself, and SHIPA was pretty clear that they wanted to see a separate pedestrian bridge, because there has been one there for 130 years. So that's what we're shooting for.
I just...
I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
I remember always, we were talking about another bridge in the village, and it came to light that actually the town is in charge of bridges, does the town have any relationship to this one, or is it a state?
This is state highway, state bridge, state highway, state bridge. The municipal, our municipal bridges within the village are the town, so for instance, the one over at the Landsman at South Parsonage, that's the town.
Okay, so the town doesn't need to be involved?
Town is not involved, this is completely us.
But they are the one by the mini park.
Okay, okay. And then one other quick question. I know we've been talking about complete streets, and how to tie in sidewalks and bicycling, what's the plan for bikes or the...
Do you want to, we can jump ahead if you would like, because that's the Route 9 corridor discussion.
Right, so I can leap ahead to that, so if you would like.
Nope, let's pick that up after.
Okay, so I would say that the plan, at least that DOT is looking at, would be, they were looking at two 12-foot lanes, eight-foot median, you know, eight-foot medians, barriers of the bridge and then the separate bridge, so you'd have an eight-foot, eight-foot on either side, at least for a bicycle.
I just had a question about the, that open barrier, because I know the discussion was a safety factor, right, and this one is not the same, is similar to the one over 9G, but they had an issue with the safety factor that we wanted to have, but there was a PL3...
Right, the first one, basically, that even though the speed, it gets in the weeds, even though the speed limit down there is 30 miles an hour, the bridges are always built for one, one speed limit higher, so they're built for 45, basically a large truck at 45 miles an hour crashing into the barrier, the, there are currently concrete balustraded designs with the vase shape that would be much more like the original Astor Bridge, they are not crash-worthy.
That's the point I wanted to...
Yeah, they are not crash-worthy, that's why we're going to this other design. So I'd like to make a motion that the board and the mayor sign on to this letter, and I will send it tomorrow.
Second.
All the parties.
I second it. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's move ahead, very good, thank you, Rick. Emergency antenna, just a brief update, there was a question asked last time in terms about frequency interruption, and we got an email from NICOMCO, which is doing the design. Just remember, we have three current in parallel footprints for what we are trying to do to combine a police antenna and a fire antenna. There is currently the fire antenna, which is up off of Berka Road on a private property that needs, the antenna itself structured needs to be replaced, and we looked at that, and there was a $240,000 cost, and now, and some additional cost into then, to protect the landowners since it's on private property. We also are looking at the cell tower here, which has the approved height, and will give us the same coverage of it, and we are also looking at a mast antenna that the fire company still has on the top of this building. So just so I wanted to make clear that what we're putting on there are not these big things that you see for cellular. In your package, you will see a picture of a vertical antenna, right, that goes on top of the cell tower, right, and it's attached to a post up on top, so it doesn't take away any of the space that's been vacated by any of the other carriers up there in terms of revenue. And they also said that the police frequency is 150 megahertz range, and the fire department's frequency is 450 megahertz. This is lower down in the frequency spectrum from where all cellular frequencies start, which start at 800 megahertz, and up, going from there. So there should be no interference from the tower with the two lower frequencies, and there's no interference in terms of the space, and that all has to be agreed upon if a new carrier comes on and that analysis is done. But so far, we have not received a formal quote back from NICOMCO and Crown Industries on what we need to do, or what it would cost to put that on there, we're still waiting for their feedback, but this is to answer the question of what it would look like on top of the tower, which is the antenna, and in your package, you will also see the frequency charts that are available to show the spectrum of where the frequencies are.
The one is UHF, remember UHF on...
I do. So we have nothing to move on, it's just information now on that.
So my concern, I talked to Pete, and he's really not looking at the mast tower right now, he's looking at the Crown Castle Tower.
NICOMCO is looking at the mast tower, though. They promised to come back and tell us whether that would work as well.
Okay.
So, but I don't know the answer until we hear back from them.
Okay, because I have a strong preference for that, if it works, just because the verticals...
The mast towers, what you're...
Yeah, the vertical separation district, distance on this tower might prevent an array from being able to, a commercial rent payer from going...
But that's what I just said, basically, NICOMCO said it would not.
You still have a vertical separation distance with these things.
NICOMCO said it would not, so that's...
Without what?
Interfere with the vertical separation, and that's...
No, but what I'm saying is, the tower is crowded, and like every five, five to 10 feet is another array.
Right.
And you can't just put an omnidirectional antenna two feet away, I just don't want to bump a carrier.
I agree, we don't want to dump a revenue source, and that's what we're trying to address with NICOMCO.
Does Sprint still pay the rent on there?
We're receiving the same amount, it has not been reviewed.
It's just really... Did we rewind the tape?
All right, so no action to be taken there. Soho Water, any updates?
Yeah, we're working on that. They're requesting that we show them the, our copy of our withdrawal permit, which shows that we're permitted to serve that area, which is sort of the equivalent of asking someone who lives in an 1890s Victorian where their certificate of occupancy is. But, so we're looking at records, I was in the basement, I did find a withdrawal permit from 1961, it had an exhibit that showed that service area, so hopefully that'll be helpful to Brandy, I left the box in Martina's office.
She came and took some things, too.
She got it, and then she's going to foil that at DEC to see if they have some of our old withdrawal permits, so we don't want it to be the bottleneck for Soho.
And so just a reminder for everybody, they came back based on the application the grant was put in, it said that area is outside of our service area.
Well, they asked us to show that it's not.
Yeah, so they're saying that it is, and we say it is, because we've always had water to Grasmer, and we were looking for the proof that it is there to avoid just having to go through the whole process to put it back on.
Having the pipe in the ground is not an approval?
No.
That's what I'm saying, it's like...
Right, you have to be approved by, you have to be approved by the DEC to be able to do that, even though the pipe is crowded.
At some point, we're great.
Maybe the county has the records.
You know what, they do have, I think they do have a lot of records. I found some of that stuff in the basement.
Hopefully it's all...
But yeah, Brandy just told me to get the application for the DEC or whatever that...
Vanessa, Village Hall, Flex Tech is aye.
Okay, so this is the project to take a look at Village Hall, just built in 1970, and try to increase its energy efficiency, has an old oil-burning furnace in the basement, so we did what they call a Flex Tech study, where we did basically an energy study of this building, and we had a set of recommendations for how to make upgrades to get some energy And so we had a proposal for the next step in how to actually firm up the design of what that project would look like, and then we thought, hey, wait a second, this is a 1970s building, there is asbestos in this building. So we brought, we worked the engineers to bring in a hazmat consultant. The idea was for him to come and do a study of Village Hall that would be pretty thorough, so that we would really have a sense of what exists in terms of hazardous material throughout the building. We know, for instance, it's in the mastic, in the tiles, and just to reassure everyone, like, we're safe sitting here in Village Hall, this is just, asbestos is when you just disturb the material, that it becomes hazardous, so when you're doing things like construction projects, it needs to be treated very carefully. So the proposal that we got is $6,600, just to come and do the hazmat study, okay? So this is what those things cost, I guess, seems like a lot to me. I don't know if now is the time we're going to undertake that, but we wanted to bring that to the board and share with you, that's what I came up with.
Is that for the entire envelope of the building, including fire, or just our side?
That is to do, so what that hazmat study would entail is actually boring holes somewhere discreetly in the wall, to see if there's asbestos material in the walls. We think there might be asbestos along the joints of pipes internally.
I can show you where they are.
Yeah, and so that project, you know, the energy efficiency project, project, one of the pieces of the proposal we were interested in is providing more insulation in the roof, because there's vents that lead straight out to the roof that's not tight at all, so we would also ask them to look at the ceiling slash roof there. And so, yeah, I mean, if we, if we found something in the wall right over here, it's probably over there in the firehouse. So really, this study is meant to be a holistic look at this building, whether it's the fire department that wants to do some construction, or whether it's us over here that wants to do some construction, or we want to do a whole systems-wide project to the building. So it's, you know, it would be a nice thing to have if we ever want to make changes to the layout of this building, or to the systems of this building.
Vanessa, you might want to look at, when they put in the ADA lift, they can do some asbestos abatement.
We gave them that information, yes, exactly, right on, Karen, because we dug that information up, and that was part of the information that they're using.
Just so you don't have to reinvent the wheel, like they've done a piece of it for you.
And that fee was based on them having that report, so that was helpful to give them. And just to remind everybody, this is over and above the $15,000 for the architect fee to do the work.
Yeah, the next design phase. So, you know, I can make a motion for us to go forward with the hazmat study and just kind of, you know, take care of that, and then have that sitting on a shelf for if and when we need to do some renovations to this building, or if and when we can undertake a larger upgrade to our systems.
I think we, I'd like to look to see where we get the money, where we have the funding, to be able to do that.
Yeah.
And we haven't done, we haven't done a deep dive into, again, around our six-month time, our window, we're going to be doing a very deep analysis of our funding.
Yeah, maybe this is something we could discuss as part of even our budget conversations.
Well, I'd like to bundle it with the $15,000 and $6,000 and say, let's, if we have a package to go for.
So what's the $15,000?
So that's for the architectural renderings?
That's for like the next design phase of...
Didn't you guys already approve that?
Did you approve that?
Yeah, I didn't know, I think.
About the $15,000, I don't think we approved.
I know you talked about it, I'm just asking, because normally I would chime in and say, where are we going to get the money?
Yeah, I don't think we approved the $15,000 yet.
I don't think we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I say I'd like to look at this as a package and say, because we need to do that, the first part is 6,600, and then, you know, if that's feasible, then how can we go forward to keep the project moving?
Right, right, yeah, and there have been other conversations about, you know, does the fire department want to have another piece of a room here or something, and we're opening up walls.
And I think the budget is a good time to talk about it, because we can also determine how involved the fire department wants to be, and can we share the costs with the fire department, with their budget as well.
Okay.
So we're going to table this?
We'll table that.
Thank you. Composting.
Oh, okay, so update on the compost pilot, that program will be ending at the end of December. It's been a great pilot, we got a lot of good information. As you know, I've applied for two grants to try to put together funds to build a compost facility, and I'm a finalist, we are finalists in those grants.
Oh, are we? Really?
Yeah.
You found that out, huh?
Today, I got an email from the contact for the DEC grant, which was $200,000, she said, I think we're going to go into contract. So that's exciting, and then the other grant that I applied for, I asked for $100,000, and they said that I'm a semi-finalist, my application is a semi-finalist, but it's contingent upon getting a yes from the DEC grant.
Of course.
So, I mean, it's looking good, I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch, but it's really exciting, just for today. And I just wanted to mention, all of the participants, we had 100 households who took part in this compost pilot, and I want to thank them. There were some who were really perturbed now that they're in the habit of getting their scraps, you know, not putting their scraps in the garbage, they're perturbed to have to go back to that, so I am trying to put together some workarounds, not municipally funded, so I'm just kind of doing this privately as a neighborhood project, but I'm hoping we'll come up with something that could serve those people in the meantime, so...
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, what we alluded to before was our Route 9 corridor, and kind of a connection to the Astor Bridge that was there, so I'm going to turn this back over to Rick on something we started many months ago.
Something even more, yes, we actually started this in November of 2021, and at that, slightly before that, at that time, the mayor heard that Dutchess County Transportation Council was willing to select projects for complete streets analysis. He went to Dutchess County Transportation, and they agreed that they would take a look basically at the Route 9 corridor from the Landsman Kilbridge all the way to the intersection up by the Hasselblad. And the idea is, how do we look at these, how do we look at our streets to make them more bicycle, pedestrian-friendly, that's the theory, that's the theory of complete streets. So I'm also on the transportation sub... So I'm also on the Transportation Subcommittee for the, a comprehensive plan committee. So the process was Duchess County came here. We walked and talked the entire corridor about what was possible, what was available, what could be done. Duchess County came back with a draft plan. I then brought that actually to the Comprehensive Plan Committee members, who, and then we walked the entire corridor. And they had some comments and questions that they, that they put together. The final output is this study from, sorry, better, from Duchess County Transportation Council. And these are ideas about what can be done to make this corridor more pedestrian, bicycle, pedestrian friendly. They're just ideas. And in order to take the ideas to a certain, to the next level, basically, what we have in front of us is a task order. And it's a task order, tie and bond, to start doing some conceptual designs based upon what's here in the Duchess County Transportation Proposal. The general idea is tie and bond is going to do these conceptual designs, bring them out, make some nice renderings for us, and then we can bring them forth to the public and get feedback about what people think works or doesn't work, what they like or don't like. But this has been, you know, nothing is in concert sometimes, but I've been trying to solicit as much information from the Comprehensive Plan Committee group as we possibly can. They've already incorporated some of the ideas over the Duchess County Transportation Council documented, their, their thinking. So this would be basically moving this along so that we can, as a community, have a discussion about what we think we would like to do to improve this corridor.
I just like to read the last paragraph of the scope of work for the public. And this is from the task order number twenty-two, thirty-four. And this last paragraph, following the village's approval of the gateway conceptual layout, we will develop a three dimensional model of the improvements. The model will be further rendered to create a one graphical representation of each gateway. We will meet with the village, review and receive your feedback on preliminary renderings. Following the meeting, we will finalize the renderings incorporating the village comments and the public, and what we said, we're going to add a public comment. And final renders will be provided to us in hard copy and PDF form that we can use then to go out to the broader audience. And so Time Bond will perform the scope of work as noted above, not to exceed a fee of fifteen thousand dollars. And they will undertake a work on an hourly plus expense basis and we will be billed in accordance with it, with their billing rates. So I worked with Karen to find out a funding for this as well, so we can do that. We currently have fifty-four thousand dollars in our parking capital fund, which is, you can kind of make correlations since this is improving the corridor on Route Nine, which improves some parking and interfacing with the bridge. And what Rick mentioned is we're going to try to incorporate into the design, the bridge design as well, so you can see the total layout of the corridor from the bridge all the way up to, all the way up to the hospital. So we could take the fifteen thousand dollars from the capital fund project. So I'd like to make a motion that we continue working with this project and hire Time Bond to deliver the graphical models for a fee of fifteen thousand dollars using the money from the parking capital fund.
Second.
Discussion.
I look at this as a resource document and I don't want to be a killjoy, but it's, it's sort of, it's, it's the resource, it's a referral document. And if the subcommittee comes up and the final master plan adoption takes twenty-five percent of it, or if we took the highway study and we had workshops and we came up with, you know, a smaller version of what people really want, I would then take that to conceptual engineering. Because I don't want to take the whole thing into concept engineering if it's sort of like the, I mean, there was a roundabout, they suggested a roundabout. So I don't think, it seems like it's premature to just put all of that into the engineering basket. It's a resource, it's a referral document, and it's very good. I like it. And there's some.
Yeah, is there, is there like one layer of editing more to do before it goes?
Yeah.
Spending fifteen thousand?
I, I don't, I don't want to design something that the master plan committee won't even adopt.
I, I think, well, I would say there's nothing, I mean, frankly, the master plan committee wants more than what they're getting, and some of which is not particularly feasible. So they are behind what's in this document. They're, 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 they're good with what's in here.
Well, then I would rather like workshop.
And, and one of the important things about.
And hear from the public.
Sure, one of the important things about this document is that Duchess County was working with the state on the state road. And so the state has a fair amount of say about what they are willing or not willing to do in this corridor. So some of the things like a roundabout are not, the state is, really doesn't want to do that. And it would take, even if we could, we'd have to, basically the intersections have to qualify, to have a traffic light before they're even willing to consider a roundabout. There were certainly, if we're talking about the north edge of town, space constraints that came up very quickly. The, I can say that the, the transportation subcommittee, they generally like roundabouts, but it didn't seem like in our walking and talking with Duchess County that they were really going to be feasible in, in these spots, as attractive as an option it is to some people.
But that was just one example.
Yeah.
I mean, the crosswalks with the ramps, like, they're great if you can get funding, but we have a document that we could maybe even get started with a grant request.
So what we talked about was that document is quite wordy and has many options in it. And to condense that down to have a good workshop, we felt that we needed to have these renderings to be able to have the good discussions.
Yeah, but that's a fifteen, right.
So, yeah, yeah, what you want to do first. I mean, the problem was working with the document because of all of the wording associated with it versus having a rendering to be able to go from.
It'd be nice.
I'd like Angela to do some of her photo shopping.
Angela's up for that.
Interpretation of the state requirements.
Right, and, but I think the other point is that.
No, but just to give an idea to the public, you know what I mean? Not to have it like, and then when you're.
Yeah, that's, those are expensive exhibits, fifteen thousand dollars.
No, no.
I think we all can get what, by description, when you've seen these things.
That's okay then, I would, my question then is, how, how, what would be the way that you would see moving forward at this point? If we don't, if we don't do this step and bring some documents forth to people, what, what would be the plan to move forward? I mean, we're just saying, we're going to wait however long until the comprehensive plan committee comes out and then do it again or do it?
This is a great referral document. If we see the Community Development Block Grant come up and we want to try, try for all the, the crosswalks and the striping, because that's real cheap things to slow down traffic and have eleven feet lanes. And we can go in for a, you know, a thirty thousand dollar grant request or something to do, you know, from Terrapin to the hospital or whatever, you know, in segmented.
Well, we probably have to build it in segments anyways. I mean, that's going to be something.
Right.
There are other.
That's my point, like, let's just do it segmented. Instead of designing the whole thing upfront and then take twenty-five percent or twenty percent of the pieces one at a time.
So you want to say maybe concentrate on the south side versus the north side, you're saying? Because the metal is not being touched.
Let's have workshops and see what the public can read inside.
So I think the, one of the elements that has come up of this in the comprehensive plan committee, the Transportation Subcommittee, is that there hasn't been a coherent vision for what we want. And, and I understand, I understand what you're saying. It's like, hey, we've got some really good ideas here and let's be opportunistic in terms of the funding and the money. But I can say from just like a pattern book for housing and historic design, people are talking about essentially a pattern book for streets.
Right, and that this is almost like a template for where else the complete street pattern could fall.
Right, so, so it gives us something to shoot for. It may take, you know, years to do this, but it puts it all out there. That would be my, that would be my, my reason to go forward is that there would be something that the community had seen, seen was behind. And then we knew that, you know, would be the goal of this and probably the successive administrations to fulfill that plan.
So I got a thought here. Since these are really meant to be the workshop documents, that's what they're for, to have the discussions and be the rendering. What if we go back and work with Time Bond and say, okay, given this, what is the incremental fees then for making changes? So we have a view of the total package, right? Because that's what these are for, to have workshops. So I'm agreeable to go back and say, hey, Time Bond, what can we, you know, how much would it cost to make these changes going forward based on, based on the workshops? So we end up with something.
If you are in the workshop and you're showing a rendering of this element, you could say, and the price tag is.
Yeah, right.
So which one do you want to invest in?
But then we can say, option one, option two, option three, and then kind of rendering down. But that may require different, more work on their part.
Yeah.
And we don't have that picture yet.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to propose that we go back to them and ask about a complete project.
Okay.
For renderings for workshopping. Because that's what they want to do. They want to guide us through the workshop.
So, yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
But what we're really trying to move towards here is a coherent vision for the Route Nine corridor.
Right.
So that basically, you know, slow traffic and make it friendly for people to move through it, people on foot or people on bikes to move through it.
And slow down traffic.
And slow down traffic.
It just seems like a super expensive way to get.
We're open for suggestions if you know how to do it cheaper.
You're designing, yeah, I want.
Fair enough. I mean, it's fine. I think we can table this, it's fine. But, but I'm really glad to have the discussion because these things have been bubbling in various places, Duchess County, Transportation Council, Comp Plan Subcommittee, and there's been a lot of ideas floating around.
Yes.
And it, it seems like we can begin to draw some of these things together.
And you remember, the goal was to kind of merge it with the bridge as well.
Yeah.
I mean, so we were looking at the whole thing, not just pieces.
Yeah. No, I love the idea.
Again, my point is, I think we know what these things look like.
I know.
Okay.
You're smarter.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm sorry, what'd you say here?
No, I said, I don't understand it. So you may have a better visual than I do. All right.
Right, so, so we'll table.
All right, so moving on. Next topic is on the grants. I just want to give an update that the, as the Autism Support Committee did receive from the Thomas Thompson Trust, a twenty thousand dollar matching grant, which means now the committee is now going to be focused on trying to do some fundraising to meet their goal for their projects, which really was close to fifty thousand dollars. But we're very thankful to have received from the Thompson Trust the twenty thousand dollar grant proposal for, as a matching grant. And you'll see very shortly what we want to do for getting some funding. Okay, next. Watch guard trade up. This is from PCA. We have a request to improve our watch guard, which is our fire box coming in for security. And the total amount of the request is one thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. It's highly recommended by watch guard that we improve this to improve our security for our internet services within the building. I'd like to make a motion to approve the watch guard upgrade for one thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Grant, a brand, system distribution pump.
Yes, this is the, the slow shutdown valves after the pumps, they need to be serviced in apparently solenoid valves and some other things. They need, they need to be overhauled. So I have a bid here for seven thousand three hundred and four dollars from Ross Bell. It's, you know, it's something that's pressing. The waters like going back into the clear well and the, the pumps are going on a lot longer than they should. And it's a higher energy bill, et cetera.
Keep writing out, Dave.
I, I don't know.
I mean, if it.
Eventually, yeah, yeah.
They're running, they're running more.
They're that short cycling.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Do you need a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Seven thousand three hundred and four dollars.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And why would you, you've got me here? We do have an intern's prospect from Bard to do the water line. Her name is Ash Snow and she wants to get started. So I would just like to make a motion that we would use Ash for no more than a thousand dollars for the, to get started on this project. And she said she could work in, as a summer intern also.
So we verbally evolved, we agreed to go forward with this externally, so that's great.
But I'd just like to get a motion.
Second.
For the.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Okay, next special request, and this was alluding to before. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be taking over the, from The Taste of Rhinebeck, which will be held on April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. It's the Walkable Trail Culinary Delights featuring restaurants, spirits and specialty food retailers. This will be a ticketed fundraising event with fifty percent of the event proceeds to be donated to the village of Rhinebeck for you, by the Village Autism Support Committee. And the other fifty percent will be used by to support the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce. So I'd like to make a motion to, the reason they're doing that now for April twenty-sixth, just so you know, is because they want to start the advertising and then start doing that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce Event Application for The Taste of Rhinebeck.
Second.
Any questions?
I'd like to talk to them about shouting out all the, all the restaurants that are doing composting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Next, minutes approval for eleven eight twenty-two. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for eleven eight twenty-two as presented by the village clerk.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Rick, anything on the tree commission?
Yep, a couple elements from the tree commission. First of all, I just want to just return to the fall planting that we did as the village corridor beautification tree restoration project. This was, again, funded with a generous grant from the Frost Memorial Foundation. And I'd like to just point out that we had a great crew of volunteers and they're going to get their names read. And if you, excuse me if I butcher your name. Walter Cotter distributed trees and stakes. Tom Johnson, Lydia Slavy drove the water truck. Med Crawford, Derek Mason, Vanessa Pertozi, Carly Frekoli?
Frekoli.
Frekoli, thank you very much. Emily Stern, Mark First, Pat Evans, Kathleen Evans, Andrew Hunter, Patrick and Heather Kelly and their daughter Addison and son McLean, Michael Florenza, Owen McGettrick, Joyce Messenger, Mary Burns, Steve Sansola, Alberta Guero, Tom Johnson, Connie Loon, Taka Chess, Kristina Tavener, Dodd Crane, Mary Casey, Michael Slavy. The Interact Club also showed up, or members of Interact Club showed up. They helped all mulch twelve of our locations and get it placed. And that was June Nathan, Frances Nathan, Malcolm Stewart, Noah Roger, Olivia Pulver and Roxanne Clark. So I can just say it was really a terrific and productive day. There are still some trees to be planted in the spring along Route Nine. The reason for the staggering is that there are just some trees that cannot be successfully transplanted in the fall. They have to be transplanted in the spring. So there will be another batch of trees going in. That's all going to be professionally, professionally installed. So this has been a terrific project and I really hope that people appreciate that we're moving, we're growing things for the future. Hopefully that'll have a good, long, good, long life cycle there. The commission also received one application. This is from Nine Livingston Street, and it's a little bit different than normal. Basically, it's to apply a growth regulator to the crab, the crab apple trees in front of the house. Because basically the tree is sending out lots of crab apples and it's a mess. So this was a topic of a fair amount of discussion at the, at the tree commission. But basically, what was determined is that this is a pretty commonly used, or that this kind of technique is actually pretty commonly used. This is not anything out of the, out of the ordinary, basically. It happens in orchards all the time. So the tree commission approved. So the tree commission approved that a certified arborist does some of the pruning on the trees, and that a growth regulator can be used this year, and that any future application will have to be discussed once again. So it was a little bit, you know, was, was a bit of a topic, what does mean a growth regulator, enhancing it, but basically it's determined that this is not an environment, you know, not, its environmental impact is, is, is no. And then the discussion is, we'd like to see an application for the regulator, maybe one other, so we understand what's going in there, and then if it's going to be an annual thing, then we would not have, not have to do, have to do a permanent application every year. So that's a long way of saying I'd like to make a motion that the board accepts the review, the commission's review of the application from Nine Livingston for pruning and the application of growth regulator to crabapple trees.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vanessa, Climate Smart.
Excuse me. The town of Rhinebeck also has a Climate Smart Task Force, and they're looking for volunteers. So if anybody's interested, you can reach out, and, and, yeah, they're looking for folks who are interested in working on climate change at the local level, and I'm looking forward to collaborating with the town. The Climate Smart Rhinebeck Village Task Force has been invited to be part of a special event at Star Library on January 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This, this workshop will be hosted by Sustainable Hudson Valley, this is a local nonprofit that works on climate-related activities in the Hudson Valley. We're going to be discussing some of the potential recommendations for the comp plan that relate to climate change, and Sustainable Hudson Valley has developed a whole toolkit for how local municipalities can look at what needs to be done regionally, statewide, and sort of align everything. So the public is welcome, it's a free event, come and help workshop these ideas. We, finally, I think we're going to be starting our greenhouse gas emissions inventory in January. This was delayed ever since COVID, so this is exciting, it's finally going to happen. This is called CAFI, we're part of nine municipalities that got a grant to be able to do this together as a cohort. And just also want to mention that Mayor Bassett and I went to Marist College, and we sat in on the final presentation of the Marist students who have been studying flooding along the Lansman Kill and are developing a predictive dashboard about flooding, and we saw their final presentations, it's always a pleasure to go see the young, the young people, we're trying to help out the village.
It's truly cool they've built this piece by piece, from doing the initial study to doing the initial installations, I mean, it's taken a number of years, but it's been a great project for them, and it was, again, it was a good long-distance vision, and it's really starting to bear fruit.
Yeah, and every semester, they have to document their work so that it can be passed on to the next semester, so it's a really cool project.
And it's going to continue?
Yeah.
So we're not at an end?
No, but I think it's just wonderful, it's a great vision from Marist, and they've had the tenacity to see it through.
Naturally like doing real projects.
No, no, I remember it from the start, from the get-go, it's really good.
Okay, we're going to skip the comprehensive plan unless anybody has any updates for that, since Lydia's not here. We, I would like to make a motion to approve the vacation buyout request from employee number five for 48 hours.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our last meeting for 2022 at 7:55, and wish everybody a happy holiday. Seven seconds?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Over here.